Is now open.
Good evening, Azusa. Good evening, Azusa community students, parents and staff. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. For item 1.1, I would like to call this meeting to order on Tuesday, June 24th, 2025 at 5:28 PM. Moving on to item 1.2, roll call. Board member Greer.
Here.
Board member Ramos.
Here.
And board member Benavides and board president Arianas are not present today, and I am present. Moving on to item 1.3, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by board member Greer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Ramos. Any discussion? Colleagues, please place your vote.
Handle.
Yes. Board member Greer?
Yes.
Board member Ramos?
Yes.
And I, yes. Motion passes three and two absent. Moving on to item 2.1, public comment on closed session agenda items. Hope, do we have any blue cards? Henry, do we have any hands, hands risen on Zoom?
We do not have any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to closed session. Our open session will begin at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
The meeting is now open. The meeting is now open, Yolanda.
Thank you. Good evening, Azusa community students, parents and staff. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. The following are the guidelines for public comment items on 7.1 on the agenda. If you wish to participate in public comments, please make note of the following. The Board of Education encouraged public input. Board members are not permitted to respond to public comments. A member of the staff will contact you if the information is needed. Individual participants in the public comment must adhere to the following guidelines. Speaker cards must be turned into the board secretary or hands raised on Zoom in attendance by seven, 10, or 10 minutes after the meeting has begun. No speakers may use their time to another individual speaker. Speakers must be present when their name is called in order to be heard. Maximum speaker time is three minutes. Thank you for your participation. Moving on to item 4.1, pledge of allegiance. Can you please stand? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to item 5.0, report and actions of closed session matter. By a vote of three yes and two absent, motion passes. The board members approve student discipline case number 24-25-0101. By a vote of three yes and two absent, the Board of Education approves discipline case number 24250102. By the board vote of three yes and two absent, the Board of Education approves student discipline case number 24250103. Moving on to item 6.1, recognition of Azusa High School athlete coach, excuse me, chosen as Mountain View League outstanding seniors. Mr. Sanchez, I turn it over to you.
Can you hear me now? All right.
Yes.
There we go. Um. Board members, good evening. Board members, Superintendent Ortega, fellow, fellow board members and cabinet. Tonight, I'm here representing Principal Gabriel Fernandez and Azusa High School, and it gives me great honor as the athletic director of Azusa High School to talk about the five most outstanding athletes that were chosen this year for the Mountain View League. We have a banquet and every school in the Mountain View League select five students and space the criteria based on their, their grade point average, their athleticism, their character, how well they are with their teams, how they represent Azusa High School and themselves, and these five were outstanding athletes in their field. And they represented our school at the banquet. They received a commemorative patch, also a plaque. And it was, it's, to me, that's one of the, the most special nights as the athletic director because they get to be honored and they, they represent us and they did a, did an excellent job in their field. Sofia was already honored here. They've all been honored at some point in time. Sofia was a, an all-leaguer, all-CIF player for flag football, which we started two years ago. And then Oscar is our team captain, our MVP, and Badminton led us to CIF, another league championship back-to-back years. And my son, Adam Sanchez, was an all-leaguer, all-CIF player in basketball. And the other two are not here, but, oh, they are. Oh, no, no, this is outstanding. So, yeah, so, but there, we, we, we really want to say thank you to them. And thank you guys for honoring them tonight.
And we have certificates for, for all five, and we'll give all five to you, Coach, but, but also have, have some to present to the students who are here. And so I'll just reading one of them. Azusa Unified School District certificate of recognition is proudly presented to each of the students. And it, and it talks about them being selected as Mountain View League outstanding seniors for their exceptional academic performance, athletic excellence, and meaningful contributions to their school and community, exemplifying the highest standards of achievement and character dated today, signed by our superintendent and board president, Gabriela Arianas. And so we would love to, to be able to take a, take a photo with you all if we could invite you forward.
Do, do my colleagues want to make any comments?
Yeah, well, I will have many comments, but I will, as we're awarding many students tonight and others, I, I will save all of my comments toward the end. Same.
Okay, same for me. Thank you. That being said, we're moving on to item 6.2, recognition of Azusa High School athlete chosen for Mountain View First Team All-League. Mr. Sanchez, you're still there. Good. You're on. What happened to you, me, huh? Oh, my gosh.
Got you all? All right. So up here I have, well, not all of them, but there's 31 athletes that made all-league. And they're all voted upon by the coaches that they, they're in their particular sport. Baseball, we had three. Basketball, we had two. Girls' basketball or boys' basketball had two. Girls' basketball had one. Flag football had five. Football had one. Boy soccer was one. Girl soccer had five. Let's see, softball, two. Our stunt team had seven. So this year we added stunt as a sport to CIF, just like we added flag football and boys volleyball two years ago. Now stunt is an official sport. Boys volleyball had one. Girls volleyball had three. To make 31 athletes, they are all top-notch. They, I haven't done the math, but I think if you're an athlete at Azusa High School, the average, I want to say is a 3.3 grade, 3.2 to 3.3 grade point average. We'll be commended on that. They've excelled in their sport, like I said, and they're all quality, great, good, good people, good kids. I enjoy working with all of them and it's, it's special time here in Azusa right now. So, thank you very much.
So I, I need, I need everyone to understand how difficult of a time we are about to have in a moment. Because I'm holding a stack of certificates. That is at least about three inches thick. That, that, that reflects, I mean, just, just how many students that, that we are celebrating and we know that they're not even all, all, all here. But just to read one of the certificates, Azusa Unified School District certificate of recognition is proudly presented to student for, for being Mountain View First Team All-League prestigious honor awarded to the most outstanding and impactful players in their sport. This achievement reflects their exceptional character, excuse me, exceptional talent, dedication and leadership within the Mountain View League dated today, signed by our superintendent and board president. And again, yeah, I have more comments for the end, but I'm definitely going to need some help with this, Coach, as we invite the students forward to take a photo.
So if we can step forward. Okay, now we're moving on to item 6.3, recognition of Azusa High School jazz band. Mr. McKenna, are you present? Ms. Garcia Medina?
All right. Good evening, Clerk Rodriguez Pena, board members, cabinet and audience. Surprised I'm not Mr. McKenna, but I'm stepping in for him tonight to recognize Azusa High School's jazz band. I don't know if you got a chance to attend any of their concerts, but they truly are an amazing group of students who have talent beyond what would we could imagine. So we would like to recognize Azusa High School Jazz Band for competing in the Riverside City College Jazz Festival at the Henry Coyle Theater in Riverside. The novice jazz band received first place. The intermediate jazz band received second place, showcasing their incredible talent and dedication. So we would like to recognize our Azusa High School, both intermediate and advanced jazz band. A round of applause for them. I'm not sure if any of our musicians are here with us. If you are, please come forward. Are there any jazz band members here with us tonight? Well, hopefully they're online. Again, this is my opportunity to rave about them. So if you didn't catch a concert this year, please be on the lookout for the calendar for next year because they are a really, truly amazing musician. So thank you.
Thank you. And we do have a couple of certificates. I'll read both of them here. Azusa Unified School District certificate of recognition is proudly presented to Azusa High School Jazz Band for having the novice class jazz band receive first place at the Riverside City College Jazz Festival held at the Henry Coyle Theater in Riverside dated June 24th, 2025, signed by our superintendent Arturo Ortega and our board president Gabriela Arianas. Second one is Azusa Unified School District certificate of recognition is proudly presented to Azusa High School Jazz Band for having the intermediate class jazz band receive second place at the Riverside City College Jazz Festival held at the Henry Coyle Theater in Riverside dated June 24th, 2025, signed by our superintendent Arturo Ortega and our board president Gabriela Arianas. Congratulations and thank you.
We will be sure that Mr. McKenna received those. Okay, thank you. Moving on to, moving on to item 6.4, recognition of Glaston Middle School athletics who placed in the East San Gabriel Valley Middle School League Finals. Mr. Podoma. Oh. Mr. Lopez is here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Good.
He can't be here today, so I'm taking his place. Good evening, board members, Mr. Ortega, fellow cabinet members. I'm Mr. Gustavo Lopez, Assistant Principal for Activities. I'm here tonight to recognize our fellow athletes, student athletes from Glaston. They did an amazing job at league finals. Just so you know, it is a very competitive league. There's a lot of schools out there that are very, very strong. And to get an honor in placing at league finals is, is very honorable. So you should be proud of that. I'm proud of our student athletes for achieving that recognition. And we're here tonight to, to recognize them for such a great effort. Your dedication, your hard work has paid off. So. Everybody at Glaston is very proud of you and your accomplishments. So good job.
Thank you. I also have a stack not as big as board member Greer's, but I will read one and then we can give them to the coach. So Azusa Unified School District certificate of recognition is proudly presented to the, the athlete for placing and it, it, it gives the, the place that they came in, in the event at the East San Gabriel Valley Middle School League Finals dated June 24th, 2025, signed by our superintendent Arturo Ortega and our board president Gabriela Arianas. Again, congratulations to all the students and to the coaches. Thank you.
If my colleagues can step forward, please. Okay, moving on to item 6.5, recognition of Azusa Unified School District Nutrition Services staff. Ms. Jamal, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to recognize our nutrition service staff who's been trailblazing beyond the San Gabriel Valley, LA County with many of our awards under the leadership of our director, Ms. Stella, who's here. If you can come up, Ms. Stella. And all of us typically say all ladies, but we're not just a team of ladies anymore, but we have males in our team. We have won several awards from the best chicken wing. We've also implemented several scratch cooking. To the extent that the last couple of weeks of school, we had some of our Azusa High School students at our central kitchen where they were able to have a day in the life of a chef. Are they cooking it? Come on in, ladies. Well, these are the hands behind the art of the delicious food that we have been cooking. We're going to continue to grow and explore, but thank you for Board of Education to continue to support and thank you for selling her team for their innovation, innovation and their desire to make meals great for our students.
And, and I have a certificate of recognition. Azusa Unified School District is proudly, proudly to present Azusa Unified School District Nutrition Services for their outstanding commitment to scratch cooking, making school meals both delicious and nutritious. Their chicken wings recipe won the Power by House Professional Award for their best scratch cooking adapt, adapting category and their Monte Cristo sandwich was nationally featured by the Share Our Strength and organization promoting best practice for breakfast, signed by superintendent Ortega and our school board president Gabriela Arianas. Would you like to say something, Ms. Stella?
Yeah, actually, thank you for having us and honoring us this evening. And I'm glad that the students are actually here because they are customers. So we really work hard to make sure that you guys have a meal and that you're healthy and ready to learn and well nourished because meals are a part, a very important part of your day. We know that most of you come hungry and it's our job to make sure that you're nourished. So thank you for coming to the cafeterias. We'll continue to do better. I know there are areas that we need to work at improving. We hear you. And this is the team, part of it, they 75 of us. So this is just half of everybody because everybody's already on summer break. So thanks for coming into the cafeteria. Thanks for supporting us and thank you Board and Administration for always supporting nutrition services. And thank you to the awesome team.
Would you like to move forward to take a picture, please? Now, do my colleagues have anything to say? Board member Greer?
Yeah, I, this, it seems like just a week ago, we were here honoring another set of just those who make our district great, and it's because we were just a week ago honoring another set. And now here we are, again, maybe breaking the record for the fattest stack of certificates that we've given in, in, in one batch. I just continue to be so, so proud of our district. I continue to be so grateful for the, in, in particular, the students who make up our district and, and the, the ways that you are, are excelling. Even as, as Coach Sanchez is describing, what the average GPA is for, for, for our athletes. It, it, it's not just on the field, even reading the certificates, it's talking about your character, it's talking about your dedication. It, it, it's talking about so much more than, than just simply your, your athletic abilities. And yet, it's an honor to be able to celebrate with you that your, your athletic achievements. And so we are honored, we are proud, we are excited to, to celebrate you. We're grateful for the ways that you put Azusa continue over and over and over again to put Azusa on the map and represent your community well. And so just, just want to say thank you to, to all of the, the students and then also, of course, the, the, the coaches and, and teachers. And I'm going to get to nutrition services in a minute, but, but all of the folks who, who make it possible. Just want to say thank you and that we are very proud of you. And then also, yeah, speaking to nutrition services, it's, I have, again, I've said before, I've eaten the wings. But, but first I heard about, I heard about the wings before I ate them. And then I had to go and actually eat, eat the wings and, and they are all that they're cracked up to be. And it's not just the wings, it's, it's, it's so much, much more. And there, there's even just like a, a little bit of some love that goes into this food that you, that you can't quite quantify or that isn't quite in the recipe. And so thank you for, also for your dedication, for your innovation, creativity and all that you put into nourish the, the, the greatest part of our district, which is, which is our students. And so we, we are also grateful for you, proud of you and celebrating you and your team as well.
That was really well. I don't know what else to say. Um, why, again, I want to congratulate everybody that's received an award to that recognition. And as board member Greer said, it was, it seems like deja vu. We did this a week ago, right? But it's, uh, continues to be very exciting for us to be able to recognize everybody. And I'm proud to be now as part of the board. And so want to thank all the student athletes, the musicians, and of course, our staff with the nutrition services. And along with that, you know, also thank and recognize all the staff, the coaches, and of course, the, um, you know, being a. you know, being up for many years and involved in my kids' activities and sports, a lot of work from, from a so I know the hard work that goes into that. So thank you to everyone, the parents, students, staff, and our Nutrition Services Department. I've been connected to this district for over thirty years, and I had no idea what was going on with Nutrition Services. And we had the opportunity to taste some of the food that they prepared, and those wings. I'm not a wing, but I'm, I'm converted now. So, but, so congratulations to you all and for, for the great work that you're doing. So thank you all.
So I wanted to start off by saying that, you know, I do appreciate all the students, all the athletic students. I do know, you know, how hard it is because you have to keep your grades up, and then you got to go to practice, right? And your kids did it, and I am so proud of all of you students. I also, you know, I'm happy that you're putting us on the map more and more every time we have meetings. We always are recognizing our students from Azusa High School and our other surrounding schools. May it be music, may it be athletic, may it be performances. But today, for me, it's bittersweet. You kids, if you know it or not, you made history. This is the last thing, we're uniting the gladiators and the Aztecs together, and who said that it could not be done? You kids prove people different, and I do appreciate that. I'm so proud of you that you continue to work together as a team, and that's what teams are. And I know your coaches and your parents, you know, also are very appreciative of them getting you to your your teachers getting you to your classes, your parents getting you to practice, and there you go. Are all, most of you students seniors? Yes? So I'm hoping you continue doing what you do best. And also, the jazz band. Fantastic. I've seen them play. I mean, seriously, like, they're like little men, you know, I mean, they're like, they're fun, like men, like in a jazz band, I would say. But, you know, they're in high school, and I'm glad that also that Glaston Middle School, they're winning the award for the athletic award. Well, great, because we need you at Azusa High School also, so we can continue, right? We need to continue to stay on the map and continue to do a great job. And Nutrition Services, well, I don't know if you know, but I was a lunch lady for eight weeks. I was in a program called the Chef Anne Program, and I work in the cafeteria, and I see these ladies cooking from the heart. I, they asked me if I wanted to make, help with Monte Cristo sandwiches. I'm like, sure, like two hundred? Oh, my gosh, right? But the meat, the cheese, you know, but the thing is that it was beautiful because I seen that these, I wanted to see the purpose I joined because I wanted to see how our students are being fed, what they're feeding our students. And they proved me right because they foot, feeding them healthy foods, healthy vegetables. You know, and the meat, the meat is not just your hamburger meat, you know, it comes grass grown and fruits come from the farm in Claremont. It's called a food to table. So yes, I could see why they won this award. And also when they're doing the cooking, they do it from the heart, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you. So we're going to move on to a regular agenda. If you're welcome to stay if you like, or I guess not, bye. Then thank you very much. Yes, thank you all. The real troopers. How much did they pay you, March? Okay, now we're moving on to item seven point one, public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Hope, do we have any blue cards? Henry, do we have any hands risen on Zoom?
We do not have any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item eight point one, comment and reports and requests by the Board of Education. What member Greer?
No comments, Senator.
What member Ramos?
None today, thank you.
And for myself, I just want to say that I went to the Veterans Park for the Nutrition Services kickoff, and they served over a hundred children in the community. A healthy meal, pizza, salad, fruit, slushies, and sunships, sunships. Thank, thank you to Stella and her staff for their hard time feeding the students. And the weather was beautiful, so it was a great day for them to be out in the community. And I would like to wish everyone a happy and safe summer. Moving on to item nine point one, comment and report by student Board Member Superintendent and Cabinet, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Board Clerk. I just want to jump in the chorus to congratulate all of the students that were highlighted today from Glaston Middle School and Azusa High School. The jazz band is one hundred percent phenomenal. If you close your eyes, it just, it blows your mind that these are our students that are performing this level of music. I happen to know a student who is in jazz in another city far away from here, in a very, 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 very big high school. I would say more than double our high school and wishes that they had a jazz band because he's into jazz, and that's why he likes to play. So again, just the, the, the kudos to our staff who, who keep pushing themselves. I mean, this year, we unveiled a cover band, right? And so just, just super grateful of the mindset of continuous improvement. And I'm going to echo the words of Board Member Greer, just the level of our students is, is impressive. They, they, they never fail to, to impress on what they're capable of doing when we give them that, that, that space to do so. And then just to all the students and staff who have the opportunity to have some kind of summer, wish everyone a nice, relaxing, fun summer. Thank you.
Good evening. Just again, congratulations to our athletes, musicians, Nutrition Services. It's always great to kick off our meetings in a celebratory way and to recognize the good things, positive things that are happening. And Azusa Unified also want to thank our students, staff, families for a great year. Wish everybody a happy summer, and we'll see you all in August.
And I too want to congratulate everyone that was recognized tonight, but also want to take a moment to thank our maintenance team and our custodial team at all our school sites. We recently just had our Williams inspection by outside agency last week, though I know we still have areas of growth, but we are hearing rumblings of how much we've improved, how the custodial team were very attentive and were able to address things. They were very impressed with how many previous items, deficiencies that the maintenance team was able to address. So I just want to thank them all publicly, give them their shout out at this time. Also want to remind all of our staff that open enrollment is currently taking place. So please set up a virtual appointment or in-person appointment. In-person appointments are here at the district office, but you could do a virtual appointment from your leisure. We are also continuing our summer feeding at our parks. So please, if you have anyone under the age of eighteen and under that would like to have a free meal, whether they attend our school or not, please stop by and grab a delicious meal. And lastly, reminding all of our families that they should have received an envelope from our district regarding sun bucks. And this is just a form that you can return back. There's a pre-addressed stump, stamp envelope in there where you can just fill it out, and that'll help you get the sun buck card to have at least a hundred and twenty dollars for meals to help supplement meals over the summer.
And I too would like to congratulate our students and all of those who were behind their successes, our coaches, our, of course, our staff, the families that really are also behind their success. And also, all those leaders who are helping pave the way to make sure that these opportunities are available to our students. I love the recognition of our employees and love seeing that our Nutrition Service employees are being recognized for the hard work that they do. I have heard all of the hurrahs of the wonderful food that our, that our students receive. But I also remember that that, we had heard a different message not too long ago, and I really think that the leadership that we currently have really has paved the way to, for having what we have here today with the recognition of our Nutrition Service employees. I want to lift up the HR team who is hard at work, filling these vacancies that we, we get at the end of the school year. And so there's, this is our busy season, and our team is hard at work, making sure that we have all our positions filled for the beginning of the year. And so we're doing some good work on that front. And then lastly, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe summer. I hope everyone returns back rested for the beginning of next school year.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item ten point one, approval of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Ramos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer. Any discussion? Seeing none, colleagues, please face your vote. Motion passes, three yes and two absent. Moving on to item twelve point one, presentation of local indicators progress report twenty twenty five. Ms. Garcia Medina, I turn it over to you.
Good evening, Board Clerk Rodriguez Peña, Board members, Superintendent Ortega, Cabinet, and audience. I am pleased to be here this evening with you to present and share with you the twenty twenty five California School Dashboard Local Indicators. The state of California requires that the local indicators represented to the Board of Education at the same time that our ALCAP is adopted, so at the same meeting. And I believe that is our next agenda item. Later in the summer, these local indicators will be uploaded to the California School Dashboard, and they will be made public early December for the public to have access to our local indicator progress report. As you know, the California School Dashboard is our state's accountability system, and it allows our district to use multiple measures to gauge our progress towards student, towards meeting the eight educational state priorities. Next slide, please. California's eight state priorities outline key areas for our schools and our district to address in order to ensure that we're supporting student success. So they include basic services, implementation of state standards, course access, school climate, student and family engagement, other student outcomes, as well as student achievement. Together with these, together, these priorities ensure that we're not only looking at test scores, but that we're also working towards creating safe and inclusive environments where our students will thrive. These eight priorities are the foundation of our local control and accountability plan, our ALCAP. And it also addresses our accountability efforts. You'll see that these eight state priorities are aligned to our ALCAP goals, and they also are tied to our metrics. So they're in line with the eight state priorities. There are two types of indicators on the California School Dashboard. Our first that you see here are state indicators, and these are indicators where the state is pulling data directly. For example, our S-Back scores in English Language Arts and math, that would be an example of a state indicator. State indicators are measuring academic performance, chronic absenteeism, English learner progress. It's measuring graduation rate, suspension rate, as well as college and career readiness. As we receive performance on these areas, the state uses graph that shows five levels of performance with colors, right? Where red is the lowest performance level and blue is the highest. The second type of indicator that you see on this slide is what we will be diving into a little bit deeper, which is our local indicators. And they're developed by districts using a self-reflection tool that's provided by the California Department of Education. And it's used to report progress on meeting the state priorities. These local indicators only apply at the district level. They don't apply to schools individually. On this next slide, you see the state priorities for the California School Dashboard, and you see the state and local indicators side by side. And you're, you're able to see that there are five local indicators, and two of them overlap with state indicators. And though that one is, it's priority six, which is school climate, and priority seven, which is course access. So it's rated both as a state indicator and as a local indicator. For the school climate, the state pulls suspension rate to report our progress. And we use our local survey, the Youth Truth Annual Survey, as a local indicator to measure school climate. For course access, the state pulls college and career readiness indicator, and that's pulled directly by the state, and we pull access to a broad course of study by measuring if our students are receiving access to a broad range of courses. And we use master schedules at the secondary level, and we use elementary school schedules to gauge progress in that area. This next slide shows you what the dashboard landing page looks like for twenty twenty four. There are three takeaways that we see, or we can say that they're key messages from the California School Dashboard. First is that quality education is defined by more than just a single number. So as you can see, it's not only just measuring test scores, but there's multiple measures for us to see our progress. The second key message is that equity must be sought for all students all the time. So you'll be able to dig into the dashboard and pull specific data for subgroups. And the third key message is that it's supposed to support local decision-making. So as we've worked through the ALCAP process and revising for this school year, for this coming school year, we've been able to look at the California Dashboard with different stakeholder groups and to ensure that we are making decisions that are aligned with the data. This slide shows you the local indicator process that we follow. Our first step is to identify what measures we're going to be using and to gather input. So we, we take a look at our survey data. We ensure that we're receiving feedback from all educational partners, and then we disaggregate that data to make sure that we're examining results for subgroups. Then step two, we decide how the district can use this information to identify areas of strength and areas of need, and then to make informed decisions as we're planning and revising our ALCAP for the upcoming school year. Step three, we report on each indicator at a public meeting, a Board of Education meeting, which we're doing tonight. And then step four, as I mentioned earlier, we will upload these local indicator results to the California School Dashboard for the community to view. In this next slides, we're going to In this next slides, we're going to go into the local indicators. This first priority area is under for basic services. And we're assessing three areas as a district using the Williams Settlement Reports as the measure. And we're trying to progress to reach that 100%. So we're measuring, do we have qualified teachers? Are our textbooks standards aligned and available for our students, both in the classroom and at home? And you can see that it's 100% for textbooks and 99.02 for qualified teachers. And we're also measuring if our facilities are in good repair. And here you see that we're at an 85% for this past school year, which is a 12% growth from the previous school year. I know our business services department and our site admin have been doing a fabulous job of really looking at those reports and identifying deficiencies and working towards improvement. And Ms. Jamal talked about it a little bit earlier. So hopefully we'll continue to see this positive trend in the upcoming school year. Priority number two is implementation of state standards. And this is addressing how we're implementing standards across our schools, in our classrooms. And we're using a self-reflection tool to gauge progress. It's a five-point scale. You see it on the left hand of this, left side of this slide, where stage one is the exploring and research stage. And the highest level is level five, where you're in full implementation and sustainability. You'll see the subtopics, providing professional learning, we're in full implementation. Standards line instructional materials, also full implementation. Instructional policies and programs, also full implementation. Academic standards adoption, full implementation and sustainability. And support for teachers and administrators is also full implementation and sustainability. These are all subtopics and there's various questions within each topic. The details and the individual questions you'll find listed in the local indicator progress report, which you have a copy of and it's also attached to the board and agenda item for the public to view. And it's available online. Our next priority area is parent and family engagement. And here we're also using the same self-assessment tool to gauge how we're encouraging our parents to participate at our school sites and how we're partnering with them in the decision-making process. And we're focused on three areas, which are building relationships between the schools and families, building partnerships for our students and seeking input for decision-making. We are also including a narrative description of our results that summarizes our progress towards engagement in our local indicator report. Transitioning to priority six, which is school climate. This indicator measures our students' sense of safety and connectedness. This data is taken from the District Annual Youth Truth Survey and it shows the percent positive responses for the past four years. Year 2025 is the year that will be reported on this year's local indicators. You can see that there is a drop in safety perception at the elementary level. And at the middle school level, there's a substantial increase in the perception of safety. So that's definitely a positive trend that we want to see continue. For high school students, there's also a slight 2% increase for safety perception. There are similar results for students experiencing a sense of connectedness. There's a 1% decrease at the elementary level and the middle school and high school both show a 2- to the 3% increase in this area. We still identify these areas as areas of need for our district. And we're taking steps to increase safety and connectedness at our school sites. So we want to continue to partner with organizations such as Second Call and Western Justice. And we want to continue to improve our implementation of community schools to add to that sense of safety and connectedness. We also have added staff in our ALCAP that support our students, including social workers, assistant principals, success coaches and behaviorists. And so we're hoping that through these actions, the ALCAP will continue to improve the sense of safety and connectedness for our students. This priority seven, which is our, the final local indicator is access to a broad course of study. And here we're reporting on three areas. The data on our progress, our interpretation of the data and the use of our data. Each year, like I mentioned earlier, we examine elementary class schedules and secondary master schedules to assess our progress in offering a broad course of study to our students. And in particular, we're looking at ensuring that our English learners and our special ed students have access to these courses. You'll see that 100% of our students were able to access a broad course of study for this past school year. And we continue to see a need for that added instructional time to provide these courses. So we'll continue to support zero period, seventh period and increase access to A through G credit courses through our ALCAP actions and services. This concludes my presentation of our 2025 California School Dashboard Local Indicators. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Board member group.
Thank you so much. Couple of questions on a couple of slides, if we can go to slide number five.
Yes.
All right. So looking, looking at our dashboard results, do we, how do we, or how can I better phrase this? How much do we know about the, the, the factors that contribute to these, these scores in the different areas? And, and what, 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 what can we do? It almost seems like a question I'm asking and it's like all the work that we do all the time. And I'm wanting, I'm wanting to acknowledge that. But, but seeing just like overall, I'm seeing green, I'm seeing a green and I'm seeing a red, oranges and yellows. How do we, how do we kind of shift, shift that over a bit? And I guess it's a, it's a lofty question that we, again, we, it's all the work that we're, that we're doing. But it's, it's noteworthy just to kind of keep this in front of us. I don't, I don't want to brush past this slide without, without addressing and without acknowledging that it is our desire to move the needle over into the other, other direction. What, what can we do? I'm also curious, how do we compare? I know this is like by compared to the, the state overall, if you will. But how do we even compare to districts of similar, I don't know, that demographics or makeup of, of, of districts? I'm just wanting to get a sense of what does some of the iterative progress toward where we're wanting to go look like and how can it be reflected here? I see what we're doing. It is very clear to me, all of the, the work that we're doing. How do we, how do we realize that in, in our dashboard? What would we need to do from over next year to see the needle, you know, move, move over?
Before I let Ms. Garcia Medina try to address the, the question, I do have some insight in terms of the second part of your question, maybe, or a part of your question when, you know, how do we compare? So looking at two of the components there, I can't speak to all of them off the top of my head. But definitely English Language Arts and Mathematics. If you look at surrounding districts that are close to us, I believe about 90% are in the same exact position that we're in. So they're orange, orange. I think there's a district that is orange, yellow, if I recall correctly. But they all hover somewhere, somewhere, they all hover in, in, in the orange pretty much. And again, this is just locally. And I don't know off the top of my head where the state is at. I can look that up relatively quickly. But just to answer that question, just to kind of give you a little bit of context to that particular piece of the, of the question.
Great, great question. And I, and I do believe it's continue to do what we're doing, right? We, we have seen some growth. I think it's about analyzing the data that we have and identifying what's working and shoring up that work. The other piece I think is really looking at our, our metrics and, and looking at that three-year outcome, right? And we did this year break it up into year one, this is what we want to see, year two and year three. So that way the goal is attainable for our school sites. But really it's about analyzing and looking at our practices, right? So what stands out to me is the English learner progress, right? That, that's a red, so we need to work on that area. So what are we providing to our teachers in terms of professional development? What materials are we providing for our English learners? Are we differentiating for this group of students that we call English learners? But within the group, there are so many different types of students, right? And so do we have services and supports for them? I know in the ALCAP, we have newcomer support. We have success coaches that are addressing and looking at, at data and analyzing. So it's, it's about being strategic with what we're doing and always going back to the data. And again, the assessment is a one-time snapshot of what we're doing. So really looking at our local assessments and making sure that those are occurring throughout the year. So it's more impactful on our instruction in the classroom.
I can add, I did look it up really quickly. We match up identical. We match up identical to the state of California in every single gauge, with the exception of the English learner progress and college and career. And both of those were one tick below. But everything else matches up exactly to the state of California.
Yeah, I had a question regarding slide 10. School safety perception and the sense of connectedness. Actually, maybe two questions, but the first one is, is when, when, when during the school year is the survey done?
The survey is conducted right when we come back from winter break. So it's during the month of January and it lasts three weeks.
Then my other question is, if you look at 2022, which is where, you know, the, for this year back and you fast forward to 2025, in both tables, both categories, all the scores or the percentages are, are lower, right? There is a couple in between the years that have gone up. But if you kind of take 2022 and you fast forward to where we're at now, we've dropped in, in, you know, in all the levels of school and then in both, both categories. So is there any indicators that you guys have looked at as to why that's happened? I mean, I'm going to make an assumption that part of that is the reorganization of some of the schools perhaps. But is there anything else that kind of stands out in your, in your assessment of these, of these measurements?
I mean, it definitely is a difficult task to pinpoint to one specific item that's, that's caused these numbers to fluctuate as they have. Reorganization definitely played a role. We've also experienced quite a bit of violence in the community that has, has also attributed to some of these perceptions of safety. And we've responded as a result of that. And, and I'm starting to see that small increase, right? And I talked about that three-year goal that we have, which is to increase 5%, but at the end of our ALCAP. So if we continue the trend of increasing 2% to 3% every year, we will reach that goal of that 5% growth at the end of the three years.
And I have a question actually to piggyback on page 10. And yeah, that's true. We, we see, you know, how it's dropped from 2020, 2022 to 2025. My question is, the sense of connection, you know, I'm wondering, I mean, do they know what that really means? You know, and because I, I do hear, I do stick to many parents and they're positive. You know, they like our schools, they know we're doing better. But then when I start seeing, you know, something like this and it's like, wait, wait a minute. So I mean, is it possible to do have a community meeting to explain, you know, what does exactly mean? Who's safety? Does that mean in school or going home and from school? I don't know if, 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 maybe they're not understanding the questions because sometimes the way they, they word it, right? Because I mean, I wouldn't even know sense of connection. I, you know, that, that's, that's a trick question. And I, I think that we can have more, more outreach to the community. Because I know we have the parents to me, they're the same parents, you know, coffee, the principals. And, and there were pretty much of how, what they mean. But I'm just talking about every person that doesn't really have that connection with the schools, but yet they're filling this out.
And I think that's a
We'll get a better result.
Yes, I think that's a great suggestion. I think it's about being transparent with our language, right? And how we are implementing the survey. So if that means having a discussion and having teachers discuss the, the questions that will be given prior to having the students answer them, I think that will be helpful. I think the other piece too is we're starting to really see our secondary students become advocates and active in, in terms of voicing their opinions, right? And so maybe we lean, lean into student union a bit more to help us with this survey and the communication and really having our students understand the importance and what it means. You know, secondary students sometimes don't put the same effort maybe. And so maybe coming from their peers, that might help get their attention to really being truthful and honest about the survey. But it does ask various questions and it takes a summary to give us this summary measure of the percent positive responses. But great suggestion.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any further questions? Yes, board member group.
Yeah, I forgot I had another question also, also here on, on 10. Similar to what board member Ramos was, was asking, but, but just trying to zero in on specifically, it's, it's noteworthy, if we're looking at school safety and perception, you, you mentioned this in your presentation, but it's noteworthy that there was a decrease in elementary and it's noteworthy that there was a significant increase in middle school. And so I wonder if I can ask a more targeted question, which may still be difficult. But do we have a sense of, of just those two data points? The, the positive, the, the increase and the decrease for elementary and middle school?
If I'm understanding your, your question correctly, the increase, I, I think first for the middle school has been attributed to the work that they've done around restorative practices, community circles. And I think for the elementary students, there is a decrease. And maybe it's just they're not understanding the language, right? So for example, there's a question about safety procedures. And so for an elementary student, you might hear the word lockdown and you might feel like I'm in danger. But it could be a lockdown and I'll always go back to when I was a teacher, it was a lockdown because there was a bee hive and it fell and there were bees everywhere. So a lockdown can mean many things. And I think for the younger students, it has a heavier meaning and that may attribute to how they're responding to the questions. So maybe it's about looking at specifically our elementary and looking at the specific questions to identify which question is it that's giving us the lower response rates and then targeting that. So is it, I'm concerned about safety because I see violence? Or is it because of the safety procedures? Or is it that I'm being bullied, right? So it could be a variety of things and it could range from school to school. So I think it's about digging into the data at our school sites.
Would it be possible to, I don't, I don't even know how to make this request. What is, is it, if you were to dig in, could, would it be possible for us to get some analysis of what, what you, what you uncover as, as, as you're poking around those things? Just so we can get a sense of even those two data points to, to provide us with some information on what's happening at the ground level?
Sure, yeah, definitely. We can do that. In the area of safety and school connectedness.
Yeah, and I guess specifically what I'm seeing here, as I look at school, a sense of connectedness, there's, there is, it's kind of, it's somewhat flat. There is some, some increase, there's the decrease in elementary. it's, it's somewhat flat. There is some, some increase, there's the decrease in elementary, but it's somewhat flat. But there are some noteworthy shifts on school safety. So elementary and middle school in particular.
Definitely, I can provide that.
Thank you. Moving on to item 12.2, Adoption of Unified School District 2025-2026 Local Control and Accountability Plan. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Board Member Ramos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer. Any discussion? Seeing none, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes, three present and two absent. Moving on to item 13.1, Presentation and Update of Surplus Poppy Timeline. Mr. Tega.
Thank you, Board Clerk. Since we just had an update last week, there is no update between now and this week. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item 14.1, Approval of the Unified School District 2025-26 Adopt Budget. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Ramos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer. Any discussion? Colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes, three present and two absent. Moving on to item 15.1, Approval to Establish Athletic Training Position and Job Description. Can I have a motion? Motion by Board Member Ramos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer. Any discussion? Seeing none, colleagues, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes, three yes and two absent. We are now on item 15.2 through, through 15.5 on the agenda. Proud to take any final action on this employment, employment agreement. The Brown Act requires the governing board, the governing board to early report a summary of a recommendation for salary, salary schedules or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for local agencies executives. The Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Superintendent are all local agencies, agent, executives, and a proposal contract amendment for each of them is being, is before us this evening. Moving on to item 12.2, Approval of the Amendment to Contract of Employment Between the Board of Education, a Unified School District and the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. Amendment to the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services contract extends the term of contract by one year from, from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2028. There is no other changes to the Assistant Superintendent's contract. Can I have a motion?
Will to approve.
Motion by Board Member Greer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Ramos. Any discussion?
Yes. So at this, at this time, wanted, wanted to take a moment to, to make some comments that really apply to the, to the cabinet across the board. Just, but I'm going to make the comments here at, at this, at, at this point. It is, it is my understanding, looking at how the, the contracts are typically handled. These contracts are typically handled in the school district as well as looking at surrounding school districts that a, a, a one-year extension on, on these, these contracts is a, is a way to communicate that we approve of. We see the job that, that's happening and we would like the work to continue. And so by extending it one year, that is, that is a way to, to, to communicate that. It's also though, our, our understanding as, as we look at things that to, to do less than or more than that also communicates a, a particular message. And I, I, on, on, you know, behalf of, of us are wanting to, to communicate some, some deep appreciation that we have for this, for this team and for the work that is, that is happening. I think we see that there's, there's plenty of work to be done. There's plenty of work to be done yet, but, but recognizing all that is happening and, and just the, the trajectory that things are going. I, I therefore, as I made the, the motion, am, am moving to extend the contracts instead of by a typical one year to, to extend each of these contracts by, by a two-year period. As a, as a vote of, of confidence and as a communication from the, the board that, that your, your work is, is seen and appreciated.
Okay, so that being said, um, so I will read this again. The Amendment to Assistant Superintendent Business Services Contract extends the term of the contract by two years from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2029. There is no other changes. Well, there is a change on the Assistant Superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Board Member Greer, second.
Second.
Second by Board Member Ramos. Any further discussion? Seeing none, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes, three yes and two absent. Moving on to item 15.3, Approval of Amendment to Contract Employee, Employment Between the Board of Education and Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. The Amendment to the Assistant Superintendent of Education Services Contract extends the terms of contract by one year from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2028. There is no other change to the Assistant Superintendent's contract. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services contract, but with the extension of two years instead of one year.
Okay, so then I will retract and say, the Amendment to the Assistant Superintendent of Education Contract extends the term of contract by two years from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2029. There is, that is the change of the Assistant Superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Ramos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes, three yes and two absent. Moving on to item 15.4, Approval Amendment to Contract of Employees Between the Board of Education and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. The Amendment to Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Contract extends the term of the contract by one year from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2028. There is no other change on the Assistant Superintendent's contract. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources approval of contract and extension to go an additional two years instead of one.
Okay, thank you. I'll read that again. The Amendment to Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Contract extends the term of the contract by two years from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2029. That is the change on the Assistant Superintendent's contract. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Ramos, second.
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes, three yes and two absent. Moving on to item 15.5, Approval and Amendment to the Contract of Employment Between the Board of Education and the Superintendent. The Amendment to the Superintendent's Contract extends the term of the contract by one year from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2028. There is no other change in the Superintendent's contract. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve contract with, in the, the extension being a two-year instead of a one-year.
Okay, thank you. The Amendment to the Superintendent's Contract extends the term of contract by two years from June 30th, 2027 to June 30th, 2029. That is a change in Superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Ramos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer. Any further discussion?
Yes, one, one comment. Again, these, this is action that we're taking across the board and we want to acknowledge and again, express our appreciation for the cabinet across the board. And so I hope that in at least a small way, you hear that from us tonight, our, our appreciation of that. And also want to take a moment to speak directly to you, Superintendent Ortega, and, and express to you our appreciation for, for your leadership of the district, your leadership of, of the cabinet, of the team. And, and just the relentless, tireless work that, that you so evidently put in. And so kudos to the whole team and, and a, a kind of double kudos to, to you for assembling the team and, and leading the team.
So I also want to congratulate you and thank you all for your hard service. Us going through COVID, us going through reorganization. We're still moving, we're still making changes and you're all still standing strong. So you all deserve an extra year because we have a lot of work to do and I can't let you go before that. And thank you very much. I, we really appreciate you all. What member Ramos?
Sorry, I thought that we were communicating through Adrian, but yeah, I want also want to express my, my appreciation for, for all of you and, you know, being in this, being the new person here. But I'm, I'm very impressed with what I've seen with the whole cabinet and obviously with leadership. But you guys are all leaders, so congratulations and I, I look forward to continuing to working with all you. Thank you.
Colleagues, please place your vote. This will make it legal and final. Motion passes, three yes and two absent. Moving on to item 16.1, we are not going to adjourn. We will be going back into closed session. Thank you very much. We need five minutes, five more minutes. All my faces up there then. Okay, so now we're moving on to item 16.1, Adjournment. Can I have a motion? Motion by Board Member Ramos, second. Second by Board Member Greer, thank you. I'll just say it for him. All good, I'm in charge today. Any discussion? Seeing none, colleagues, and will?
Yes. Yes.
Ramos, I say yes. Meeting adjourned at 9:33 PM. Thank you.